Good morning. It is Wednesday, May 3rd, 2023. And thank you for joining us for a meeting of council time preceded by a work session that is of interest to many because it is on the 2023 Restricted Spring Budget Supplemental. This will be for public hearing and adoption later in May, but for right now, it is for the work session. And so we begin with that. And Kathleen, we turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good morning. So if we can just get started with the next slide, please? So the agenda for this morning is to talk about the purpose and timeline of the supplemental recommendations that are coming before council, discuss what the major impacts to some of our funds are, let the public and council know where the budget reports are, and then provide information for next steps. So RCW 3640 allows for supplemental budgets. This is allowed per cent to specific situations where supplemental budget requests are warranted, which include an unforeseen situation which puts the safety and welfare of the residents and county at risk, any unforeseen situation which may hinder the ability for a department or office to fulfill a statutory obligation, a labor contract settlement, legal settlements, and other judgments, and unforeseen revenue sources that has associated expenditures such as grants. Sorry, my computer is a little slow, so I'm trying to make sure I can see. Just a quick sec. Okay. So submission by types. We have received a total of 33 submissions for this supplemental. There are six different types that can be submitted through the budget office. The first one is previously approved by council. We have three of these items this morning. All of these have already been approved by council during a council meeting. We have two technical adjustments, which typically are just changing like coding and budget coding errors. And we have two of those this morning. There's three budget neutrals. This type of change request does recognize both revenue and associated expenses, and they have not been previously approved by council. So there's no impact to the budget. There are 25 requests, and all of these would be for funding requests that impact the fund balance. It's new funding, reductions, forecast updates, and others. And we have 25 of those. There's also two other change request types, which is budget intervention, which we don't have any today. That would be if departments and officers were requested to put in a reduction scenario for consideration. We're not in that position today, so we do not have any of those. And also carry forward, which are budgeted items that were previously approved, but that hasn't been fully expended in the prior year. So we carry forward the remaining balance to a future year. And there's no carry forwards this year. Or this morning, I would say, not this year. As for the recommendations this morning of this restricted budget, this was brought up during the 2023 annual budget process. So we don't usually do spring supplementals. We only usually do fall supplementals. But this was to allow the county and the sheriff's office to continue your collaborations with regards to the new jail services department. And there were some items that weren't completely finished before that annual budget process. Mental health sales tax, we do have a technical adjustment for that. Information technology, looking at long-term infrastructure, financial planning, and cybersecurity. Capital, this was also a discussion in the 2023 annual budget where we did not have a capital plan yet. We're actively working on that. So this is bringing forward requests for capital, only for 2023. So this does not include everything that is included in our plan. Body camera program, community services grant, they need some additional budget capacity for emergency rental assistance, and then an ARPA community grant that has already been approved by council. So the first area of the recommendations is for the jail services department. Previously approved, the jail services department asked for an FTE increase. These were half-time cadet employees, and the jail does not currently have that classification in the jail. So they were converted from a 1.5 FTE, so it's three half-time positions, and now 3.0. So this is only the technical adjustment, since council already approved that. And that's the same with the jail medical contract. The RFP concluded after the annual budget, and it was approved by council in February of this year. There is a budget neutral in the jail services department. This is just transferring the budget and the FTE from the sheriff's office to the jail services. Most of this was the support guild. If you remember during the annual budget, the corrections deputies were all moved over the FTE and the associated funding. So this is the support guild, and then some other areas in there that were worked through collaboratively between our deputy county manager and the sheriff's office administration. And of course, our new jail services administration as well. A new request. The first one is for the TASER energy weapon. Most of these devices are well beyond the lifespan, and they're no longer functioning fully. So this is a liability both for our employees and those who are housed in the jail. That is about $125,000. I will say that Chief McCabe, who's overseeing the body camera program, did take the initiative to ask the vendor if they could bundle this with body cameras, because they're looking at doing that in the sheriff's office, which actually saves some money. Unfortunately, because the jail piece is not tied to body cameras, we weren't able to do that. But we do appreciate Chief McCabe asking for that. The jail management analysis was currently a project position that expired the end of last year, and we asked to continue this as we looked at this transition. This position is instrumental in providing extracting and reviewing and verification of data, which is key for our programs, process, transparency, and informing policy. Additional jail records staff is for FTE. Historically, the staff worked Monday through Friday during the day and swing shift. Now there is a 24/7 operation. Most of the work is generated by the courts, such as court orders, calculated sentences, and processing inmate release. Superior Court is also changing the criminal process, and we'll be hearing all first appearances in the afternoon along with district court. This also impacts the record staff. In the transition, there were eight previously assigned to jail records in the sheriff's office, and only six of those eight came over to the jail. And then finally transferring current services from kitchen and lingerie equipment fund, from the sheriff's office to the jail services. Next slide, please.
Kathleen?
Yeah.
Question, please. We can match without any problem, but it's just laborious, the request number with the dollar number when it comes later in the presentation. However, do you have the dollar totals as we go by category?
I do have them not necessarily by category. I mean, we will be looking at the impact of our major funds, so you'll see the impact to general fund, mental health sales tax, REIT 1 and REIT 2. But I do have specific dollar amounts for each of the items, and I can include that as we move forward.
Was just thinking by category, because like jail services, for example, what is the total in that category?
Okay. Emily said we can provide that, because it might be in our reports online as well. So go ahead. No, she's unmuted on either end. There you go.
Okay, yeah, we can provide that. Our reports kind of segregate things in different ways, but we can pull that together and definitely have that for you guys.
You know, I kind of tried to do that last night, from the separated numbers, given the request numbers that are spread out throughout. So you don't need to do that. But I thought maybe you had it as a total, and that would be helpful.
I will just add that we do that as part of the adopt. We like separate the requests by department, and we can start doing that for the supplementals as well. So it's helpful. You don't have to go through and dig through the report.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, so the current slide is on the ARPA community grant program, which is the first one. Again, this was previously approved by council. It was $3 million, $2 million for the nonprofit grant, and $1 million for small businesses. The next one on here is the budget neutral. This is for Department of Community Services. It's a one-time increased grant funding for emergency and rental systems in the amount of $8 million. Information Technology. So they actually provided four requests, and there was two options. So it was actually two requests with two options. So it was four total. The first one was for the server equipment partial funding increase, which is, we do not have a funding mechanism right now, or it has not been increased in many, many years. So the costs that we're putting aside for the server equipment is not anticipated to actually pay for the server, which is what you're supposed to do. So what is being recommended today is taking a partial funding increase at this time, and then continue to look at this as part of the annual budget, so that the longer we put off, the larger budget impact we're going to have, so that we can look at that holistically moving forward. So partial funding increase is being recommended for server equipment, and the one associated with that is the full funding is not being recommended today. The second one is to create a cybersecurity program. So it is recommended, I'm recommending that we fully fund and begin to capture the revenue based on $160 per year per computer, starting in 2023, to fund the cybersecurity program for the next 10 years. This program did start with ARPA funding, which provided an analyst 24/7 monitoring, detection, response services, and software. And the second part that's not being recommended to that was partially funding that cybersecurity. So the recommendation again is funding the full Body cameras. So I first want to express my appreciation to Chief McCabe and the rest of the Sheriff's Office department. It's been very collaborative process with the sheriff's office, with our budget office, our prosecuting attorney, information technology, and indigent defense. While this program is, you know, under the sheriff's office purview, it does impact a lot of departments, and we all want to make sure that this is being implemented and supported, so it'll be successful when it's live. The first item here that's being recommended is budget neutral. So a couple of years ago, the sheriff's office did ask for some funding, both one-time and ongoing, to support body cameras in our community. It was approved with a contingency upon revenue. We did not have the revenue to cover it. And at that time, the council decided to put that money into the county manager's budget, just to hold it there. And we've been carrying it forward. As the sheriff's office team is looking at the contract and reviewing that, it is recommended to move that funding to the sheriff's office, so that they can fully administer that contract. So that is the budget neutral, just moving it from one department to the sheriff's office. We do have some not recommended right now, and it's basically the staffing that supports this program. Our budget office has been discussing this with our PA's office and the sheriff's office, you know, to really ensure what are our needs for staffing and support, you know, for PDRs, for discovery and technology support, and where does it make the most sense to put those FTEs? That discussion is ongoing. We're actually continuing the discussion tomorrow, and we will be recommending to bring this back in June for another supplemental, just for the FTE piece, to make sure that we're hitting it in the right spots. Okay, so our new capital projects. So in order to properly prioritize our projects, the Capital Planning Advisory Committee has developed criteria, which weighs the importance of each project. These scoring models are useful to help look at potential risks in projects and impact to our community. By creating evaluated lists to compare potential projects, an organization can easily identify where it should be allocated resources. So as you can see on here, this looks a little different than the others. This shows the priority ranking on the left, the requested number, the budget title, and then the scoring on the right. So the criteria for the first scoring criteria is liability, risk, and safety. So the questions and evaluation includes, is there an avoidance or reduction of the county's liability risk with respect to our infrastructure failure, operations continuity, or legal compliance and mandate? This score, again, is that there's a medium, high, and low numbers. And because this is the most important one that we look at, how that score is weighted is you multiply that by seven. The second criteria is, does it have a positive impact for our citizens and residents? You know, what does that mean? Is there significant value for the county residents and service delivery? Is there alignment with our strategic plan, results, and priorities? Again, there's a low, medium, and high, and that total then gets multiplied by 3.5 instead of the seven, as it is important, but again, the safety liability is the first. And then finally, efficiency gains. Will there be long-term cost containment? Will there be revenue enhancements or leveraged funding? So again, same scoring criteria, multiply by 3.5. And based on that discussion, and the impacts, and also based on what can actually be done in 2023, because again, this is only for 2023, not for 2024, the following are recommended for new capital projects. The campus sidewalk repairs, it's one-time REIT 2 funding to major maintenance fund to continue with the downtown campus sidewalk repairs. They're becoming a hazard, because the cement is developing cracks and being lifted by roots. Public Works is requesting a two-way radio coverage enhancement, the primary method of the communication between road ops and the staff while working in the field. This is during normal operations, but also during incidents with weather conditions, road closures. And as I know Counselor Mevenje and others have mentioned, we have limited broadband in our area, and there's a lot of areas in the county where it just simply doesn't work. So this two-way radio coverage will help. Sheriff's Office and facilities are jointly requesting to replace an aging alarm system at the assurance evidence warehouse in the amount of $45,000. One-time REIT 1 allocation to Technology Reserve to purchase and install a new enterprise-wide camera system for the county. Right now, we have many cameras operated and maintained by many departments, and at some places, you have cameras right next to each other, because they're giving feedback to two different departments. So this is really looking at consolidating all those cameras, purchasing, I believe, about 200, and then having it on one system. And it can also provide information for the sheriff's office if there's an incident. They can actually review all of them. One-time general fund to Technology Reserve for about $200,000 for uninterruptible power supply replacement. Internal components are no longer in production, and it's difficult to obtain the manufacturer, and the manufacturer no longer supports the current model that we have. Sheriff's Office is requesting funding to implement a workforce management software system. This will assist with the 24-hour, 365-day service deployment, $170,000 one-time and $80,000 ongoing, and $90,000 for IT sheriff's office support. The sheriff's office and IT have agreed to put in the IT budget, so that IT can manage the project. That'll be updated in the presentation during the hearing. And they're going to look at all the assessments and how this is going to integrate into Workday our current system. Replacing roofs and gutters at the caretaker's house. This is a couple of our projects. Many of them are old, decaying, and have outlasted their life. And I will note, too, most of these, for those of you who are part of our annual budget, you've seen these, and they were requested during the second budget, again, carried forward just for the supplemental. Purchase virtual server nodes for IT, one-time additional capital budget capacity of existing fund balance of $270,000. The server hosts will allow for many virtual servers to be created and running on a single host. Facilities has identified 20 rotting pans and coils in the courthouse air handler system that needs to be replaced, one-time cost of $50,000. One-time funding using existing fund balance, major maintenance, in the amount of $150,000 to power wash and paint the PSC parking structure. Installation of new window treatments at the courthouse. These have not been updated in many years and are causing some security concerns. It is requested that we're using existing fund balance of $88,000. One-time funding for $150,000 allocated REIT 1 to major maintenance, funding to replace the carpet in the center for community health. Create an additional office space inside the jail industries building. Currently, I believe that there's a few small offices having multiple people in the office. So this will like remove walls, make room for additional food service workers, build a couple offices, and also ensure that we're maintaining the separation for food, and you make sure that it's sanitary. And then finally, Superior Court facilities have a joint request for carpet replacement in the courthouse on the third and fourth floors. And this would be a reallocation to major maintenance. So just a couple of updates on existing capital projects. The first one is a technical adjustment. So this is simply a community development program for CCLMS, which is a land management system, the E-Plan Review and Code Administration Project. So this is really simply converting the amount awarded to capital and adding a project code. There's no change in scope, no change in budget. This is again, a technical adjustment that we just need to clean up in our system to make sure it's in the right spot. And then Public Works is requesting, there's one more on the prior, it's okay. Public Works is requesting to align the current budget for stormwater capital projects with the 2023-2028 adopted plan, stormwater capital plan that was approved in November of 2022. So the original dollar amount that was included in the budget was based on July 2022 numbers. This is just updating the stormwater forecast, the total program amount from $1.3 million to $1.6 million. So it's in alignment with what was actually approved by council, and that will allow them to better monitor the fund performance. Before I go on to the six-year forecast, is there any questions on the request? We do have our partners online, and some in the room here that can help answer any questions.
Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Counselor Young.
Just two really quick questions. I was curious, from my understanding, the system that we're adopting for our body cams is the same as the city of Vancouver's. Have we looked into the possibility for public records request, if we could merge for efficiency purposes on that?
I would say we have not talked to the city on merging that. We have had internal discussions regarding centralizing PDRs within the county. I know the sheriff has told me he's open to the discussion, and at least one other elected office was not supportive of doing that. They wanted to maintain that in their department.
I want to add to that, just I've been involved in this from the very beginning. So the hope in prior sheriff as well, hoping whim was to get all the chiefs on the same page with the sheriff, and not only have a singular contract for all the equipment and services and upkeep, but also the possibility of public records request consolidation, because it's a huge cost. And that very quickly evaporated as way too complex and hard to do. And the city of Vancouver is pretty much ahead of everybody, and they didn't join with Vancouver. But anyway, the effort was there. It makes some sense, probably once everything matures a little bit more. Axiom or whatever, the name of the company seems to be the company of choice locally. And I would ask everyone, including, you know, the sheriff, the PA, we need to become more efficient with these public records, because it'll save a lot of FTE and time and expense. But so anyway, it was attempted, it was just too hard to do to get everybody on the same page. And, you know, every culture within the law enforcement, too, has different standard operating procedures and how they're employed. And we're never going to change that, I don't think, if not statewide or city to city. Anyway, I did want to let you know, those are all good thoughts, and we should continue to revisit that in every opportunity.
Thank you. And my second question was on slide 10. I'm curious, this is the first time that I've been through any of the budgeting process since I've been sitting here. Do we have like a big, long list of capital projects? So I'm trying to understand like the scoring, and I mean, we have a couple items on there, one that scored 14, which is pretty low. So I'm wondering, did we pick projects that we needed and just figure out where they were with their scoring, or did we pick them based on their score?
But there's a couple factors. One is based on the score and that evaluation, and the other is, what can we actually do in 2023? We're already in May. So there are, is hundreds a safe number to say on the project?
Hopefully I pushed that right. Yes, I would say there's a lot of projects, and this scoring is just pertaining to the projects that we're trying to implement in 2023. That 14 on the list of 100, you know, it's not like the top scoring one. So we have to come back to you guys with that, like we talked about in the last work session. We're really compiling that list and hoping to show you a comprehensive list of all the capital needs.
Yeah, I mean, it's an interesting process, because carpet has to be replaced eventually. Sometime it's going to be just horribly nasty, but it still probably would always score low. So it's interesting.
Right, yeah. And this scoring is just for these projects. Again, it's not for the whole collective list.
Cool. Thank you.
So if I may, Madam Chair, since it's time with the comments just made. So I mean, we have a break between the executive and legislative and the budgeting process, and I'm reminded of the videos that Greg Kimsey had done during the first charter reformation period. And basically, one of the downsides that he was explaining was, oh my gosh, things will take a lot longer when you don't have commissioners in charge of the executive. What a gross understatement that was. So I want to proselytize here again, and highlight for my other fellow counselors, because, you know, our time is limited. And some of these projects are what I consider legacy projects, you know, things that you will be known for. Oh my gosh, we had, we put a public defender in place finally in Clark County with the current council. And that would be a huge improvement for the county and a legacy item. And I don't know what capital implications, as far as I'm assuming we already have identified office space, and I look forward to that final work session, since we've been waiting since about November to hear about it. The jail services, and we just saw play out in the legislature, total failure to write law on drunk possession. We'll see what happens in the special session. I'm assuming something good will come out of it. It'll probably never be enough because of the compromises that are made in Olympia. And I look forward to filling the gap with a public prosecutor's help if they don't have any success in this next session. But the cusp of the dispute is incarceration versus treatment. It's an age-old problem, and I'll tell you, based on my professional experience, my personal experience, you know, it just falls into the category of wishful thinking, if you want to say, just offer the treatment and they will come. For some, that's true. They hit rock bottom, they say, I'm going to change my life, and I'm going to do it. But I will tell you, rule of law, law order, is the linchpin to providing treatment, services, intervention, from sobering to detox, to follow-on, long-term treatment, whether residential or clean and sober living environment. It's a continuum of care that is a focus at the jail. And so I'm hoping our jail services will really focus on our mental health and drug addiction treatment, because, you know, there's a misnomer on the war against drugs being a failure. Not so true. And if you look at drugs being under the influence, the pursuit of drugs, the pursuit of money, it basically undergirds all the common law felonies in this country and in this world. So you have to have a component of law enforcement, and again, we need to build it in our jail. And I don't know what capital infrastructure that's going to require. It will require some. And obviously, medically supervised detox services. And obviously medically supervised detox services, which is, people don't realize, oh my God, you know, you don't know how many drugs are on board when someone comes in and gets booked in, because they lie, or they don't even know. You know, geez, I thought I was snorting meth, I didn't realize it was all fentanyl. And, and you need medical detox, you need medical supervision to make sure that transition to sobriety is as painless as possible, but as, as safe as possible. And that takes facilities, you know, it takes some capital investment. The third thing I want to mention, just again, is a legacy issue. And it kind of highlights the friction, if you will, or of the way we have our charter set up, broadband. We made some significant capital investment in broadband with one partner Comcast. And we're hoping to do a lot more, and that was with the ARPA money. And maybe with grants through Commerce and the federal infrastructure money, we'll get, recover that and be able to apply it elsewhere. But just the basic concept of, well, every county does this differently. How are we charging private venture capitalists and their little businesses on putting cable up on poles or in the ground? Because some counties charge through the teeth and others subsidize it or put it in themselves. Clark County is more through the pay-through-your-teeth, and which prevents a lot of infrastructure being put in, capital investment by private venture. So I, I, you know, get a challenge to the county to figure out a way, because I will say, and you probably have heard me say this, I'm looking to minimize the amount of supervision costs that are associated with putting cable for broadband. And basically, it's been going on and going on and going on. And the answer I'm kind of getting from staff is, well, we're really undercharging. Okay, well, that cuts directly diametrically opposed to, I think, what this council supports at increasing broadband, especially where it is expensive in the rural areas. So that may be a capital investment we want to revisit with ARPA and we'll see what comes out of these Commerce grants. But also just how the daily operation of permitting fees, you know, do we want to subsidize that? Do we need a separate capital investment fund to help get broadband out into the community, which is an economic driver, but it's also a lifestyle enhancement? And as far as equity, you know, getting people who, you can put the, have the infrastructure in there, but if people can't afford it, then we've denied the services to so much of our population. So these are line items that we need to consider and figure out on, on these three topics. And I just, so I just wanted to proselytize the manager and the deputy manager and those in the room that, and certainly my fellow counselors, because we can vote on this and we can push these initiatives forward to completion. Hopefully it won't outlive our times on the council where we actually accomplish some of these things. Thank you.
Are there any other questions on the requests for today?
Yes, Chair. We finished up with Fund 1033.
We haven't discussed 1033 yet, and I believe Counselor Marshall has the question.
I do have a couple of quick questions. As I understand, we'll still be doing a fall supplemental review. And, and this isn't so much to the budget, but just as it raises my interest in some of the programs, I'd be curious about the use of tasers, the frequency and incidence of injury. And we can, I can talk to someone about that offline.
Of course. Any other questions before we move on to the impact for this supplemental budget on the major funds? Okay. And feel free to stop me. So we'll go over some of the major funds. The first one is the mental health sales, sales tax fund. We always do a six-year forecast for our major funds so we can see what the long-term sustainability is. There is one technical adjustment for the mental health sales tax in this particular supplemental. And this is regarding the mental health sales tax returned of unused external RFP grant and budget that was allocated. So it's returning 8.9 million to, out of 12 million that was allocated to external RFP grants. So all the money was not needed, so therefore the money can go back into the fund and which it can be considered at a later time. And just as a highlight on here, the total revenues and expenses are pretty much close to what was adopted in the 2023 budget. There may be some slight modifiers, just based on the amount of sales tax and things that we know. The, you can see in here, the purplish line, yes, total forecast modifier. That just shows the 8.89 million that's being returned, which then shows the ending fund balance at just over 21 million. Per the minimum fund balance policy, which council has been reviewing and approving those, we need to have about 5.7 million in there at this time, which then has an available fund balance of 15.4 million. And I do want to note, you can see on the projected fund balance moving forward, it is growing. There's a couple of reasons why there is, or one main reason that there is a healthy fund balance, or maybe two, increase in our sales tax. But the first year of COVID, and maybe in the first one or two years of COVID, there was allocated funds, but the people who received the funding could not actually do the work because of the COVID restrictions. So that's why we, a lot of that money fell back. And then we are seeing a healthy sales tax coming in. I know the mental health sales tax advisory team, which I believe includes one or two counselors on there, are meeting now to look at the RFP process for internal and external. And I will put a plug in here, and I know I did this before when we're talking about this, but our jail services team will be looking at putting in a project for that to enhance the mental health, behavioral health and substance abuse in the jail in that program. So that will be an application coming in for those funds. Moving on to the general fund forecast. So again, the beginning fund balance is pretty close. I don't think the auditor's office has completely closed the books, but it's probably pretty close to 79.9 million, so that was our beginning fund balance. Again, the revenues and expenses are similar to the budget that we have. We do have the forecast modifiers there in the purple. And so this is the impact based on what's being recommended today. The total of 4.26 million, of which over 3 million is the operating budget. So the operating impact for general fund are all the moving of revenue to capital sense to pay for the projects that are being questioned. This might look a little different in the future. It's, it's different now because we're the first time splitting out capital. And then as our budgeting system actually can implement it, there'll probably be two budget line items for just general and our operating in capital. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's right. We, we have this capital operating impacts component of the budget system to address revenues and FTE right now. But we're hoping for the next budget cycle, we can build those separately into the capital module. So it'll be a little bit simpler, hopefully.
And we usually do this during the annual budget, but I, with having new counselors, I just wanted to provide a high level on like our expense line. 72% is salaries, it's benefits and salaries, so it's, it's supporting our people. 70% of the expenses is law and justice, which includes our sheriff, the jail services, courts, prosecuting attorney. And then we have services and intergovernmental agreements. Our revenues, the property taxes are about 40% of our revenue. Sales tax is about 31%, and then a lot of other revenues that come in at about 30% as well. And then also on the projections going out, there have been some updates to this. The salaries, we normally project the expenses at 3.5%. We reduced that to 3%. So same, Mark Gassaway and Emily have been working on this for quite a few months to really just, you know, make it more realistic and acknowledge what we're seeing in trends over the years. So that, that is an update in this forecast and what we've seen in the past. Benefits, there's no change on that, so 5%. Services, they reduced the expense forecast, again, this is projection. It was a 4% and now it's 2%. Supplies and other expenses was 3% and now 2%. They continually look at these and look at the actuals and every time, I mean, we, they're probably looking at it monthly. But anytime we're having a budget supplemental that impacts these funds, there, it's, it could be adjusted at that time and we will share that with council, because we want to make sure it's realistic and accurately reflects what's going on. And then just also for new counselors, on the available funds calculation towards the bottom, the projected ending fund balance after you take the more, or take into account the forecast modifiers, which is what, again, is being proposed today, is about just over $69 million. The assigned fund balance for compensated absences, this is the leave that employees accrue, paid time off, sick leave or vacation. There is policy on how much could be cashed out. This is 25% of the total amount that could be cashed out. The non-spendable uncovered invoices are just invoices that we know that are coming. And so we have to put the money aside so we can pay them when they come in. Minimum fund balance policy, again, this is a policy that council has approved. There's different factors that go into that and equates to about 57 to 60 days operation. And then assigned fund balance, capital projects of 20 million. This is the 20 million that council just recently adopted to assign for capital. So with all of those, excuse me, modifiers, right now we're seeing a projected available fund balance of $13.3 million for this year.
Chair. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, I have a question. It wouldn't be, I don't think, reflected in the numbers, but I'm wondering how we're doing in filling vacancies. I didn't know there were a number of vacancies. How's that going?
I would say we're still struggling. We've always had a lot of vacancy savings though at the county. So, you know, but there are harder to fill positions. I mean, we are getting some of our engineers filled. I'm not sure how many more we still have open, but it's, it's still a very competitive market that we're competing against other industries. We can get a percentage and bring that back to you though, right?
Then it makes me wonder about the salary survey and how that will impact the budget. Maybe, and I don't know if it'll be this year or looking forward to next year.
Yeah, so the, the survey or that process should be coming to a closure end of this month or beginning of June. We'll be looking at different options and seeing what makes sense, what's affordable, and then we'll be bringing that back to council. I will note that the current general fund and actual fund forecast does include a 4% based on what council approved last year as a placeholder for any outcome of the salary survey. Any other questions on the general fund? Okay, if you can go to the next one. So this is for REIT 2. And just a little bit about REIT 2 as well, this is the more restrictive of the REIT funds. So beginning fund balance is just under 28 million. You can see the revenue expenses. And then there's the two modifiers. One was the campus sidewalk repairs and the second is the new roofs, gutters and parks that is being recommended, which would reduce that by 375,000 as a one-time impact. Am I on the wrong one? Sorry, I had to like print my own because the computer's too small. I can't see the numbers, so my apologies. REIT 1 is less restrictive. The fund, you can see in here, the fund balance is increasing. I think it's because we haven't had a lot of available REIT 1 in recent years until we paid off a loan. So now we're actually building up a nice fund balance. So this, the modifiers, is enterprise security camera replacement, the courthouse carpet and CCH carpet, which totals $900,000 for one time. And then there'll be $100,000 for 2024. Yeah, you guys could have told me before I went through all of it.
Sorry.
The numbers are too small on the computer, sorry. Okay, any questions on the REIT 1 or the REIT 2?
Just a quick question. I'm curious, I'm looking down at the minimum fund balance required per policy. Why is that reducing each year?
Because the projected ending fund balance is increasing, it's a percentage.
It's actually, it addresses the debt obligations. And so as our debt narrows down and our obligations for that, the minimum fund balance just reserves them out to pay the debt.
I don't know if our auditor caught it ahead of time or the state did, but, you know, the history was, we had some wrongful use of one of the REIT funds. And we had ongoing the reimbursement, which kind of skewed the money coming in and then our ability to spend it, because one fund is a lot more restricted than the other. But, but that was a short-term history. And so we thank Mark Gassaway and team for fixing that and getting us back on a better footing so we can really look at the fund, what we should have for fund balance policy.
You can go ahead and move forward. Can we go forward one more? I already did the REIT 2, unfortunately. Okay, so this is just summarizing where the reports are. We do have them on the county's website under our 2023 budget, under the Budget Office. I believe there's probably a link to this as well on today's meeting site that will direct you there. That includes the exhibits and attachments of the changes by fund, by FTE department. And next slide. So that does conclude the formal presentation this morning. We're all here to answer questions and get feedback. And there's a public hearing scheduled for May 16. And I do want to extend my appreciation to all of my colleagues here, both in elected and in our departments and the finance team and the Budget Office. These, I always, I say it every time, it's a labor of love. There's a lot of work that goes into this. It's not something that happens overnight. It's months in preparation. They've been working on this since last year, probably last summer on a lot of these. And it's just, it's truly my pleasure to be able to share the work that they do. So we're all here to answer questions.
Questions from council?
I have a question, Chair.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Kathleen, what was the, you said something about there were a couple of counselors that wanted to see the RFP process with, what was it again that you mentioned?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think it was a couple of slides back. It was the RFP, no, see, I can't remember. I should have said something right when you mentioned it. The RFP process was something, related to something.
All right, let me.
Next time I'll ask right after you mention it.
Oh, okay, it was probably about the mental health sales tax. So we have two counselors, I believe, on the mental health sales tax advisory board. And what they do is they assess the current funding and then they just, and there is parameters that are established by law on how that funding can be spent. And then they do an RFP and conduct that, sometimes it's internal and external RFP process to invite anybody who meets those criteria to apply for the funding. And then that board reviews and then recommends to the full council adoption of the RFP and allocating those funds.
Okay, thank you, gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions for any of us? We have a lot of people on.
Just encouragement on the mental health sales tax. And I think Glenn's doing it and the chair's doing it this round. I think, you know, this is sustainable money. It's kind of like our, our sales tax is pretty uniform, hopefully, year to year. So it can be a great opportunity to focus on jail services and what is needed there, because the mental health sales tax can be applied in a lot of different ways that will be very beneficial to the community. And just as a reminder, the fund balance is somewhat still high as a result of not funding out of it for a couple of years. There was, you know, because of the pandemic, we stopped. So, so the fund balance is a lot higher than it had been traditionally. But it is sustainable usually, what comes out of it, if we're careful.
Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank everyone involved in putting this together, because you've made something very complex, pretty clear and straightforward. So thank you all for that. So thank you all for that.
Chair?
Yes.
Just real quick comment. I also wanted to thank you for, this is great. And then even though it's a tiny part of this, I just wanted to say I do appreciate us addressing our sidewalks around the public service center. I think that's important to keep that in good shape for safety of everybody, it's equitable and it sets a good example.
Other comments from council? Questions? Anything? Just to be clear, Kathleen, would you kind of trace for us how this proceeds through the process? I understand that we will have public hearing and adoption, probably adoption, on May 16. Is that correct? And what else do you see that lies ahead on this?
Yes, so you are correct. On May 16th is the hearing, so we'll do this presentation or something very similar to this during the hearing. And then we will be requesting a hearing in June for the FTE supporting body camera program. And then we'll proceed with our normal budget process after that with the false supplemental, which is truly a true up for 2023, not no new request. That will be part of the annual 2024 budget. So budget season has started.
Yes, it has. Well, it seems that we have come to the end of our questions for the work session and that is surprising. Maybe it's like Counselor Marshall was saying, you have taken such a complex matter and made it understandable and, not simple, but straightforward. And for that, we don't have to sit here and make inquiries for the next several hours. We thank you for what you have done. We appreciate it and we'll be back with this in greater detail in May. Thank you. So that is the end of the work session. And...